Call a meeting to order for March 24th, 2015 at 6:32 PM. The invocation will be for, from Reverend Roger Willis from the Trinity Free Methodist Church. And please remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance and also we'll be doing a moment of silence tonight.
Our Father in Heaven, in spite of the way things look, we know it's spring, certainly you do. And as in spring is a time of optimism and renewal and a time of salvation. We thank you, Lord, for your provisions, for your love, for your concern over each of us. We pray, Lord, tonight that you will bless every person who serves the town of Maryville and every citizen within this town. We pray for the divine protection of those who put themselves in harm's way for us, our police and firefighters. Protect them, guide them, and bless them, we pray. We pray that you'll bless the deliberations tonight at the town council, that you'll give us wisdom that transcends our own. And Lord, as we, who are transient here, make decisions that affect this town, decisions that will, in some instances, affect this town throughout the years. Bless and guide with your divine spirit. We invite your presence into this meeting, in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
At this time, I would ask that everybody remain standing and observe a moment of silence for the passing of our state representative, Earl Harris.
Thank you.
Roll call, Mr. Spires. Councilman Span.
Here.
Councilman Hardaway.
Here.
Councilwoman Miano. Councilwoman Barron.
Here.
Councilman Pettit.
Here.
Councilman Whiting. Councilman Guralcheck. Present, five present for the meeting tonight. Petitions, communications, and acknowledgements and remonstration, the FOP is here for the fallen officer donation. Sean, will you be in on that?
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. Tonight, ladies and gentlemen, we have the distinct pleasure of welcoming back our newest neighbors, so to speak. Last June, many of you may remember, the fireworks stand at 30 in Mississippi came up for sale. Durinda and I had the pleasure of meeting with three different bidders on the project. It was a national sale. And Vequity Stonebridge LLC, which is Dan Slatterly, his wife, Joanne, and Ryan Murphy secured the location. They came through the plan commission, they subdivided the property into three lots. We vacated the frontage road and they're doing a fantastic job of redeveloping it. They have since flipped the property, so to speak, over to Ashley Furniture. We're going to get a brand-new, several thousand-square-foot Ashley Furniture store there. While they were going through the process, unfortunately, as we all well know, we lost Officer Schultz tragically and too early. They came to me as Plan Commission President during the process after the FOP had their fundraiser in October and said they would like to make a donation to the Fallen Officer Memorial that the FOP is trying to develop. They asked what they could do and tonight, they're here to present President Minchuck of the FOP with a donation check. Dan, Joanne, Ryan, do you want to come on down to the check? Curtis, you want to come up there? Dan, I don't know if you want to say a few words to Officer Minchuck. Guys, I can't tell you to the council, this is the kind of economic development that we've got to have in the town of Maryville. These guys have enough like this, brand-new neighbors doing this for our fallen officers. I can't even tell you how great it feels. Thank you, Dan.
Thank you. One thing we'd like to say on behalf of Joanne, Ryan, and myself is the sense of community that this organization, this town has, and for us to be able to donate to this is incredible. I mean, everybody here in the town council, the Development Commission, the Plan Commission, everybody here should be very, very proud of this community. I wish more and more communities were like this and it truly is an honor for us to be able to make this donation. Or to jump over to the others.
Well, thank you. We appreciate your donation. And we should have some more information out of the memorial, which should be started probably in this springtime. We'll have the most right here in front of us. You guys can be invited here to see them. That'd be awesome. So, thank you, guys, for all of the donations. Thank you. We appreciate it.
There are also, Dan and I were talking earlier, he's also looking for his next project and Durinda and I are pointing him over to 30 and Broadway, to Century Plaza. So, at this time, Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion that the town council, through the town donation fund, match the Slatterlys' donation of $5,000 to the Fallen Memorial Fund.
Motion by Mr. Pettit, seconded by Mr. Span for the match of a $5,000 donation to the Schultz Memorial Fund. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Out of town donations.
Out of town donations. And I have checked the balance as Budget and Finance Chairman. We have plenty in there.
Okay.
I hear no abstentions?
No.
Motion carries.
Thank you, guys.
I have a few things under petitions and communications here. On behalf of the Saint Constantine and Helen Lady Society, I'm requesting the town council grant permission to use the space available, provided through Lamar sign, to the town of Maryville. The Lady Society is planning their eighth annual benefit spaghetti dinner fundraiser to help the Ross Township Food Pantry, and any advertised to promote this fundraiser would greatly appreciate it. I would like also request the town council approve the use of the town marquee to advertise this fundraiser as well.
Is that a motion? Do you need a motion?
Yes. So, move.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Hardaway, seconded by Mrs. Barron for us to let Ross Township use the marquee of Lamar's for their spaghetti benefit. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. One other thing from the Ross Township Trustees Office, we'll be sponsoring the 27th Annual Easter Egg Hunt for the Ross Township children from 11:00 AM to 1:00 PM on Saturday, March 28th. At Hidden Lake Park, the children will be available to have their pictures taken with the Easter Bunny and enjoy many activities leading up to anticipated Dash for the Easter Eggs. That'll be March 28th from 11:00 to 1:00 PM. That's all I have under petitions and communications. Anybody else have anything? Consent agenda, accounts payable, registered voucher for March 24, 2015, and the approval of the town council meeting minutes for March 10, 2015.
So, second.
Motion by Mr. Hardaway, seconded by Mrs. Barron.
Mrs. Barron.
Mrs. Barron.
My voice is not that high.
Motion and seconded by Mr. Hardaway.
Thank you.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Standing committees, Budget and Finance, Mr. Pettit.
No report.
Public Works, Mr. Span.
Got two ideas. The town of Maryville for 2015 Spring Cleanup Schedule. Pickup week is April 6th. All residents who live north of 73rd and April 13th for all residents who live south of 73rd. Okay?
You have any? You said you had.
I'm looking at a Resolution 15-09 discussing vote.
It's for the Community Development Block Grant. We have to open a public hearing for that, is that what we need?
Actually, there's a public hearing to be held first. After the public hearing is concluded, the council should consider, in the order that's listed on the agenda, the first, the Section 3 understanding and vote on that, and then approval of the Affirmative Action Program, vote on that, and then followed by that, the council would consider and vote on Resolution 15-09.
At this time, I will open up the public hearing for the Community Development Block Grant.
This is an opportunity for citizens to comment on proposed uses of the new fiscal year 2015-2016 Town of Maryville Community Block Grant allocation in the sum of $144,430.
Read the whole thing in.
You need to read the.
Read the whole thing into the record.
The most common use of these CDBG funds is for infrastructure, including street reconstruction, sanitary sewers, waterline extensions, storm drainage improvements, sidewalks, and projects to remove architectural barriers that prevent handicap access such as curb cuts and wheelchair ramps. The CDBG funds may also be used to eliminate slums and blight through demolition of unsafe buildings or other clearance activities. CDBG-funded infrastructure projects may only be done in areas where the neighborhood is at least 51% low or moderate income, according to HUD guidelines. In most cases, an income survey must be done to qualify the area for CDBG funding eligibility. The income information taken by the survey is strictly confidential and is used solely for this purpose of determining the area's eligibility for CDBG funding. Handicap access projects and demolition projects may be done anywhere in the community without the need for a specific area income determination. This public hearing is just the start of the application process with Lake County. There are a series of legal advertisements and comment periods that take place during the summer prior to final grant approval from HUD in late August. New CDBG funding is released to the county and its entitlement communities, including the town of Maryville, on or around September 1st and needs to be expended by June 30th of the following year. After public comments tonight, three documents need to be considered and adopted by the council, the Affirmative Action Program, the Section 3 understanding, and Resolution 15-09, which authorizes the town executive to submit a project for CDBG funding. And finally, project applications and supporting documents will need to be submitted by the town no later than May 8th, 2015, for review by Lake County. The floor is now open for any public comments on this matter.
Anybody have any public comment?
I guess a question, Mr. Guralcheck, Mr. President, to Bruce. The dollar amount was read into the record. Are we going to do the handicap curb ramps throughout town again?
As part of our.
The public knows what project we're doing.
Well, as part of our ADA plan, we commit $35,000 out of those funds to do ADA curb cut ramps. Yes.
Okay. Anybody?
Yeah, the remainder of the money has not been decided on how it's going to be spent yet.
Anybody else have anything on public comment? At this time, I'm going to go ahead and close the public comment on that. All those in favor signify, well, we need a motion and a second, right?
Second.
Motion by Mr. Hardaway, seconded by Mr. Span for the approval of $144,430. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries.
Mr. President to Mr. Buscemi, I guess for the record, John, creating this, aren't these three documents supposed to be read individually into the record and voted on individually?
Yeah, that's what we're going to do.
Okay, we haven't read, so you're going to read Section 3?
Yes.
Right, okay.
Next, the next item is the Lake County, Indiana, Section 3 understanding, which the council should consider, and if it's acceptable, should approve. The U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development, or HUD, issued regulations that provide the directive to create job opportunities for low-income persons when HUD funds are expended on a construction project. These regulations are known as Section 3 policy. The purpose of Section 3 policy is to ensure that the employment and other economic opportunities generated by federal financial assistance for housing and community development programs shall, to the greatest extent feasible, be directed toward low and very low-income persons. Section 3 covered projects are construction, reconstruction, conversion, or rehabilitation of housing, including reduction and abatement of lead-based paint hazards, or other public construction, which includes building and improvements assisted with HUD Housing and Community Development Assistance. Section 3 covered contracts do not include contracts for purchase of supplies and materials. However, whenever a contract for materials includes the installation of the materials, the contract constitutes a Section 3 covered contract. Fund recipients and contractors must show compliance with the numerical goals set forth by the regulations. The numerical goals for new hires apply only to the number of new hires generated because of the financial assistance of the HUD programs. The numerical goals are not absolute numerical requirements, they are goals that each recipient and contractor should try to reach. The goals, if not met, do not trigger sanctions against the recipient, or the contractor, or the town. However, if challenged on the issue of compliance under Section 3, the recipient or contractor should be ready to demonstrate that they tried to reach the goals. The goals for this cycle are as follows. Thirty percent of all covered new hires for the year, fiscal year 2015 to 2016. In addition, recipients and contractors are required to show compliance with the goal that at least 10% of any building trade activity which is subcontracted and 3% of non-building trade activity, such as construction, management, and other such activity, is awarded to eligible Section 3 business concerns. Further information regarding these requirements may be found in federal regulations at 24CFR 135 and the Lake County Section 3 Plan.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Hardaway, seconded by Mr. Pettit for the Section 3 understanding. Any questions? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries.
Members of the council, the next item is the Affirmative Action Program approval, implementing Section 3 of the Housing and Urban Development Act of 1968. The town's specific affirmative action steps are as follows. The town of Maryville agrees to implement the following affirmative action steps directed at increasing the utilization of lower-income residents and project area businesses. A, to ascertain from the HUD Area Office Director the exact boundaries of the Section 3 covered project area, and where advantageous, seek the assistance of local officials of the department in preparing and implementing the affirmative action plan. B, to attempt to recruit from appropriate areas the necessary number of low-income residents through local advertising media, signs placed at the proposed site for the project, and community organizations and public or private institutions operating within or serving the project area, such as service employment and redevelopment, Opportunities Industrialization Center, Urban League Concentrated Employment Program, Hometown Plan, or the U.S. Employment Service. C, to maintain a list of all low-income area residents who have applied either on their own or on referral from any source, and to employ such persons if otherwise eligible and if a vacancy exists. D, to insert this affirmative action plan in all bid documents and to require all bidders to submit a Section 3 affirmative action plan, including utilizing goals and the specific steps planned to accomplish the goals. E, to ensure that contracts, which are typically let on a negotiated rather than a bid basis in areas other than Section 3, the Section 3 covered project area, are also let on a negotiated basis wherever feasible when let in a Section 3 covered project area. F, to formally contact unions, subcontractors, and trade associations to secure their cooperation for this program. G, to ensure that all appropriate project area business concerns are notified of pending contractual opportunities. H, to maintain records, including copies of correspondence, memoranda, et cetera, which document that all of the above affirmative action steps have been taken. And I, to appoint or recruit an executive official of the company or agency as equal opportunity officer to coordinate the implementation of this Section 3 affirmative action plan.
Second.
Motion by, motion by Mr. Hardaway, seconded by Mr. Pettit, and for discussion.
Yes, Mr. Buscemi, under aye, do we need to then have a different motion to appoint an equal opportunity officer, or is that already under Mr. Spire's umbrella?
It's not, but as part of the council's approval of this affirmative action plan document that you have before you, the motion could include approval of the affirmative action plan and appointment of Bruce Spire's town manager as the equal opportunity officer for this project.
My motion's amended.
My second is amended. Congratulations, Bruce.
Thanks. That comes with a raise, right? It'll be reflected.
Okay.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Next thing on the agenda is Resolution 15-09, is a resolution authorizing directing the town council president of the town of Maryville to submit a project proposal for the Community Development Block Grant Funds for the federal fiscal year of 2015 through 2016.
Second.
Motion by Mrs. Barron, seconded by Mr. Hardaway. All those in favor, or any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Council Affairs, Mrs. Miano, anybody have anything? Personnel Policy and Employee Benefits, Mr. Pettit?
No report.
Public Safety, Mr. Whiting, anybody have anything under Public Safety? Parks and Recreation, Mrs. Miano?
Just on here tonight. Jan, do you have anything for tonight?
Just a couple of things to mention. We had our second senior meeting on March 13th, 30 members attended. I want to thank Bob Overman from the Olive Garden for supplying lunch on that day. I also had a conversation with Gwen over at the Maryville High School and their senior group. We're meeting to make sure that we do not duplicate services, and we're also going to try to partner on other opportunities and activities for the seniors. I ordered dog waste stations. I've had a couple of complaints that there was some things left behind on the walking trails. As soon as the weather breaks, I've already contacted Kevin over at the Street Department. We'll strategically place those on the CNO and the Erie Lekewanna Trails. They come with bags, and from what I understand, Matt has a lot of extra bags, so we'll make sure that we keep those filled. They also come with waste cans themselves, so people don't throw the bags somewhere. They can deposit it right in the waste can, and we'll empty those.
Do we need them at the Prusen Center too, Jan, with the walking trail there, or do they walk their dogs out there?
Well, I don't know, because we've been snow-covered all winter.
Really? I hadn't noticed.
Yeah.
I wanted to bring this up. Our running trail through town, our walk trail, 91st there, I was wondering if in any way possible, we could get a couple trash cans out there this summer. They're always, the guys go there, drive by, and there's no porta-potties available. People complain about that all the time, the police department. The trash and no porta-potties there at Canopy. If you, you know where I'm referring at?
Yes, I do.
Okay. I'd appreciate it.
There's been trash cans there for years.
They're not big enough, they don't get emptied enough.
They're always full. I know. I'm on that trail almost every day.
And there's no porta-potties. That's the main thing.
Wow.
Well, I think that we should have a porta-potty.
Yeah, I would, I would.
I think so.
Well, we need to wait, because Crown Points redoing that whole section over there on the other side, and they're going to have a building.
Trailhead.
Trailhead?
Crown Points doing a trailhead at 93rd.
It's right across the street.
And they're going to have a parking lot.
This year. It's getting done this summer. Okay, so if nobody objects, I can put a porta-potty there until the restroom is complete.
I can live with that.
Yeah.
Do we need a motion on that, Bruce, or no?
No.
No? Just starting now, go?
It's appropriate, because a lot of people have been complaining about when they're running or biking, somebody's going out in the weeds. Right, yeah. Go for it.
Yeah.
Well, maybe that's a good thing. A couple of other things. We were fortunate, the town of Maryville is very fortunate, we, I hired a recreation coordinator. She comes from Highland Parks Department, which probably has the best programming block trail of Northwest Indiana. I attribute it to their programmer. She started on Monday, so we can look forward to some extended programming currently. We're almost finalizing the park brochure. We will have programming that starts at 8:00 in the morning, Monday through Thursday, and our programming block will go to anywhere from 6:00 to 8:00 PM with just a couple hours of a break in the afternoon. So, we've got Monday through Thursday completely booked from morning till night. We let Fridays open to do maybe some special things like trash and treasure sales that we're going to hold out at the Prusen Center and things like that. Last thing that I have is, unfortunately, Mr. Hardaway.
Already know.
Yeah, okay. But, I reached out to Randy Gorka, he's the assistant principal with MIS.
Okay.
And their field currently is rented by Pop Warner. However, they might have some dates available, or days available, for Northwest Indiana football. His secretary handles all the rentals. He assured me that she will get back with me, so we can discuss some practice time. And I'm also looking to hopefully partner with them on a summer sports camp at the Intermediate School.
Now, here's one more. I thought about this, after I got the bad news, I thought about this. Can you check with Hidden Lake? They've got a lot of land out there. They've got those soccer fields that aren't, that probably aren't being utilized that much. They got those as soon as you enter into the gate, and then they've got some back over in the southeast corner.
And are those lit? Because his.
I think the ones, maybe the ones in the southeast corner may be lit.
Okay, he specified.
I know, he's specified, but he's got to get what he gets. He's got to get something. So, if we could, if we could get started there, maybe they'll put some lights, maybe they'll have some lights. They've got lights for the baseball field, and so maybe, that may be enough to get them through, because they won't need lights until October. So, if you could check with Ross Township Trustees Office and ask them about possibly utilizing some of their space, we would appreciate, that would, that would serve the same purpose. If MIS doesn't come through, because I understand that Pop Warner came before the school board Tuesday night, and it was nothing but rants and raves about how great that program is. So, getting anything out of the school corporation, we should have thought about this before we gave them money. I'm just going to say that on record, because they have to be used for friendly to all of the kids in the town of Maryville and not just the sector. So, if you could do that, I appreciate it.
Not a problem.
Thank you, ma'am.
Jan, that facility, that would be another example of co-sharing public sector facilities, because that's a township facility.
Sure, absolutely.
And you're doing a great job of working on co-sharing and cooperating facilities and programs.
Thank you.
Good work.
That's the end of my report, unless anybody has any questions for me, I'd be happy to answer them.
Seeing nobody else on Parks and Recreation. Environmental Affairs, Matt, do you have anything tonight?
We're preparing a list of projects for a seasonal drainage crew to complete this spring and summer. We'll prioritize those projects based on safety needs. We're also having a special meeting with select residents of Ross Metal Farms, April 2nd, from 5:00 to 6:00 o'clock at the Stormwater Resource Center. We're going to update the residents and discuss the results of hydraulic analysis.
Five to six, Matt, I'm sorry?
5:00 to 6:30. It'll be like an open house forum, so we realize that people can't make it a certain time, so we kind of left a span of time there, so they can walk anytime, ask questions, and we want to go over some of the results and some of the options for drainage improvements. Have a meeting this Thursday at Robust Engineering, we're going to review the options for the 53rd Court Lift Station, and we're also promoting our annual rain barrel program. We've got brochures and various media that's out there. This is our brochure, similar to last year's. We'll have them in different department offices. If anybody's interested, they can order online, or they can order through the order form here, or by phone, and anybody that orders a rain barrel has to pick them up by April 30th at our office from 3:00 to 6:00 o'clock.
Can I ask you a question?
Sure.
Are those rain barrels available after the 30th?
You can still order through, we go through upcycle products, they recycle food-grade barrels, and that's what they are. So, yes, you can, but our program promoting for a certain duration, but yes, you can.
Okay, because I added that, I, I figured it would be excellent under Park and Rec, so I actually put that information in the park brochure.
Okay.
To help.
You can have this, and I could send this to you via PDF or Word. Okay. And then we also have, actually have one of our rain barrels went to Andran, I met with the art department there, they're decorating it, we're gonna have it on display, kind of little promotional thing for, uh, for rain barrels. And that's it.
Anybody else under Environmental Affairs? Seeing none elections in public relations, anybody have anything?
Uh, Mr. President, I have two items. Uh, one is, uh, Matt and Bruce and Stacy and I are working on the, uh, the State of the, the State of the Region Address, which will be, uh, Mayor Iran, myself, uh, Dr. Eineman and Dr. Lux, um, as well as Karen Lohrman from Lake County Economic Alliance. Um, that is being held on, uh, Thursday, April sixteenth, uh, from five-thirty, um, sponsored by the Crossroads Regional Chamber of Commerce. Uh, and secondly, uh, we have a couple of groundbreakings that Bruce and Stacy and I and Councilman, uh, Councilperson Miano have been working on. Uh, the Mississippi Street Groundbreaking will be at eleven o'clock at the Teamsters Training Facility, uh, the ninety-one-hundred block of Mississippi on April tenth, at eleven A.M. And the Madison Seventy-Third Avenue, uh, Groundbreaking will be at, uh, the Greek Church on April twenty-fourth, at eleven o'clock. And obviously, all the council department heads are invited, as any general public that may wanna join us. We'll kick off both of those, uh...
CB email on that, I'll just...
Yeah.
Uh, I got one thing. Save-A-Lot, uh, Food Mart will be, their grand opening is next Wednesday, April the first, at eight A.M. So, anybody that would like to come out for that is invited.
Be tight for me. Just drive home fast. Yeah. Anybody else under elections in public relations? Seeing none economic development, Mr. Pettit?
Um, only, uh, from the RDC earlier, Mr. President, we awarded a facade grant to, uh, Raise Movers, uh, for the old Handy Andy, uh, finally occupied, finally owned, uh, by someone that, uh, has a vested interest in this community, I'll leave my editorial comments at that. Uh, he's gonna redo everything, and he assured the RDC that he will use all of the space, uh, in there, uh, and be doing a lot of work. Dorinda, I think, is he coming before the BZA here shortly? Tomorrow night, he'll be at the BZA, there you go. Um, so, finally, uh, that eyesore at sixty-four hundred is being taken care of, and I can't thank John DeWitt enough for that. Uh, we all see it, it's on the main corridor, and it's, uh, welcome.
You know, with that improvement coming in, I think that maybe the Save-A-Lot coming in, I think that we're actually gonna have some economic development up there, I think that's...
North end, yeah.
We're up and running.
Yeah.
Anything under economic development?
That's it.
Okay. Utility liaison, Mrs. Barron?
Yes, we now have enough caps saved for five benches. There is a date set up for, um, the Street Department to go down and pick up all five. I wanna make sure I mention to everybody to keep bringing the, the plastic caps in, because, um, there's gonna be more things available, hopefully, for the caps to be used for like bike racks, picnic tables, and some other things.
Do you have locations for those benches, as of yet?
Um, three of those, um, benches are going on the bike trail course for a sitting area and also a memorial area set for people that have walked that bike trail as loved ones together.
Which trail?
The Yerkoana.
Okay.
As the location on the trail yet, I don't know, I'm waiting to meet with Crown Point to make sure that I know exactly where they're gonna put all their new designing stuff with their roundabout, and where we're gonna place our stuff. And we don't know yet if we're gonna keep that picnic table that's there, that seating area, um, that parking lot, the parking on that road is now going to go away, because now we're gonna use the Crown Point site, it's gonna be bigger, there's gonna be much more parking, and it's gonna be a lot more safer. So, nobody's gonna be backing out into traffic because of that hill. You cannot see oncoming traffic, and they cannot see you. So, the bike trail is definitely gonna get redone, and it's gonna be a lot safer, and it's gonna be a lot better.
How long before they submit the plans where we know where we can place the benches, you know?
As far as, we were gonna put the benches on our side, um, I would say probably by the end of the month.
Okay, great. Perfect.
Anybody else under utility liaison? Seeing none abandoned properties, Mr. Hardaway?
Thank you, we had a, um, meeting with rehabbers last Thursday. Uh, eight rehabbers came forward and, uh, expressed some interest in working with us, John, on, uh, rehabbing houses. Uh, we didn't promise anybody anything, but what we did say was that if anything becomes available, we'll, we'll let them know, because we're not going to look to take ownership of any homes, we're just gonna look to save. This address at fifty-four ninety-nine Monroe is vacant, and the people are looking to get rid of it, so if you're interested, here's their contact information, and we're gonna move, move forward from there.
Kinda like that. I've been, uh, a landowner and a property owner.
We, we'd have to get licensed to sell real estate.
Right, and I don't think that we wanna get in the real estate business.
I don't. I don't know, Sean, you may, well, you...
I do, from nine to five, so...
I know. And that's all I got, you know, 'cause my meeting is gonna be announced, under announcement, so that's all I got.
Okay. Thank you. Anybody else? Seeing none general orders, ordinance, first reading? Ordinance fifteen dash zero nine, and ordinance of the Town Council of the Town of Maryville, Indiana, petitioning the, an approval of the addition of certain lands to the Maryville Conservancy District for the purpose of obtaining sanitary sewer and disposal service. Um, this is Resolution fifteen oh nine. Anybody have any discussion on that?
Motion to approve?
Motion by Mr. Pettit, seconded by Mr. Span for the approval of ordinance dash fifteen oh nine.
Now I have a question, Mr. President.
Sure.
Bruce, uh, Section Two lists the lots, um, is this a partial in Southmore Park?
There's a, uh, there's a map...
Oh, there is a map.
That shows existing, that are already within the MCD territory, and Bruce, correct me if I'm wrong, the remainder that are not presently within the territory are part of this ordinance, correct?
I believe so, but, you know, we actually have somebody here from the MCD Board that could probably answer your questions better. Mr. Yurko?
He completes the, the center island, as we call it, the portion, the center portion of the circle.
Now I got it, Ed, but... Map is good. Pictures.
Okay.
All right.
Any other discussion? Roll call, go. Roll call, vote.
Okay.
Mr. Spire's.
Uh, Councilman Span?
Yes.
Councilman Hardaway?
Yes.
Councilwoman Barron?
Yes.
Councilman Pettit?
Yes.
Councilman Guralcheck?
Yes, motion carries five to zero. Second readings is, uh, public hearing for ordinance fifteen dash zero seven. Fifteen dash zero seven is an ordinance of the Town Council of the Town of Maryville, Lake County, Indiana, authorizing duitions and sale of general obligation bonds of the town to procure funds to be applied to the cost of financing certain road improvement and other infrastructure projects throughout the town, together with the expenses incidental thereto, include expenses in connection with the issuance of the bonds and other related matters. At this time, I'll...
Well, at this time, you need to call for...
That's what I was gonna do. Open it up for public comment on the, on the public hearing. Anybody, uh, public comment on fifteen dash zero nine?
Fifteen dash zero seven.
Zero seven, I'm sorry. Anybody on public comment on fifteen dash zero seven? At this time, I will close the public comment on that. Need a motion and a second.
The move.
Second.
Motion by Mrs. Barron, seconded by Mr. Pettit for approval of fifteen dash zero nine.
Seven.
Seven.
Seven, I'm sorry.
Just for, just for the record, Mr. President, this is a two million dollar bond issue, which is going toward our local street paving this year, correct, Bruce?
Yes. That's what we're gonna do our subdivision streets with.
Subdivision streets.
Roll call, vote. Mr. Spire?
Councilman Span?
Yes.
Councilman Hardaway?
Yes.
Councilwoman Barron?
Yes.
Councilman Pettit?
Yes.
Councilman Guralcheck?
Yes, motion carries fifteen, five to zero. Ordinance fifteen dash zero eight, an ordinance of the Town Council of the Town of Maryville, Lake County, Indiana, fixing the parks' non-reverting program fees for the year of two thousand and fifteen.
So, second.
This is second reading ordinance, uh, I'm gonna open it up this time for public comment on this ordinance, fifteen dash zero eight. Any public comment on fifteen zero eight? Any public comment on fifteen zero eight? At this time, I see no public comment on fifteen zero eight. Roll call.
Councilman Span?
Yes.
Councilman Hardaway? Councilwoman Barron?
Yes.
Councilman Pettit?
Yes.
Councilman Guralcheck?
Yes, motion carries five to zero. Resolution, Resolution fifteen dash zero seven, resolution of the Town of Maryville, Lake County, Indiana, transferring monies of the two thousand and fifteen budget within the certain CCI funds.
So move.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Hardaway, seconded by Mr. Pettit for the approval of Resolution fifteen dash zero seven. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Resolution fifteen dash zero eight, a resolution of the Town of Maryville, Lake County, Indiana, for the procedures to be implemented to ensure the compliance with federal grants.
So move.
Second. Motion by Mr. Hardaway, seconded by Mr. Span for the approval of Resolution fifteen dash zero eight. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. BZA action petitioners, Philip Grant and owner Manuel Grant, is for case number Z-seven-E dash zero-two fifteen. It's for the, uh, drive-through window to exist at the restaurant known as PJ's Restaurant. The address is fifty-eight ninety-one Broadway, and the zoning is a C-two commercial, community commercial. Petitioner here?
Uh, Mr. Chairman, my name is Jeff Ben, I'm project engineer with D V G. I'm here tonight with Philip Grant, uh, the owner of PJ's Restaurant. PJ's is located at the northeast corner fifty-eighth and Broadway, and has been operating as a casual sit-down restaurant for a number of years. Philip would like to, uh, petition the town for an approval to permit a drive-through, uh, to enhance his business and provide more service to his current customers, and kinda feedback he's gotten from his customers is, uh, they like to see a, a drive-through. So, we went through the BZA, uh, last month and received the unanimous approval to permit, uh, a drive-through, which has now been processed to you here, uh, tonight. Findings were presented at the BZA that were, um, accepted and approved by the board, uh, demonstrating that, uh, no adverse conditions would be impacting any adjacent properties, uh, from a standpoint of use of adjacent properties, and also from a standpoint of value of adjacent properties. So, we asked that, uh, you take a look at this petition. Uh, we presented a, uh, plan of the parking lot to ensure safety is, uh, of more importance to the users and customers of PJ's. Uh, there are modifications to the current parking lot that were presented to the BZA, which they found to be appropriate to ensure that, uh, safety for access in and out, and to provide for the, uh, required parking that is, uh, defined by your ordinance. So, um, the town engineers looked at it, though we recently received a few minor comments, uh, we accept those that had to do with the cross-section of a new pavement that's being proposed. They asked us to add a quarter inch here and delete a quarter inch there, so it was very, very minor. Uh, we certainly, certainly accept all of those. So, uh, with, uh, with that, Mr. Chairman, we ask for, uh, the council's approval for our request for a drive-through.
Do you have, uh, anything on the staff report?
Yes, there were conditions placed, this petitioner only of this location only for this use only, and maintenance and repairs of the alley would be the responsibility of the owner of the restaurant, from north to south property lines, and that they will work with Andran High School for maintaining the portion of the drive that will be used by the restaurant.
Motion to approve.
Motion by Mr. Hardaway for the approval of, um...
Special exception.
Special exception, case number Z-E-seven-E-one dash zero-two-one-five.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Span.
And, uh, for the record, uh, the motion, uh, council members is, uh, including the two conditions.
Exactly.
Yes.
There's only one other question, is, did you guys bring the samples to the BZA meeting?
It's gonna be at the ribbon cutting of the new drive-through.
Okay, all right.
And, uh, we'll make sure the council's invited.
I would just like...
Just kidding.
I'd just like to say, Mr. President, that I, uh, I went down and I looked at the entire project, and I met with Philip, and they've worked with Andran, and they're going to pave the alley from his building toward to, uh, the Andran, uh, street. And so I think it's a good project, and, uh, the BZA didn't have any problems with it. I didn't have any, there was, I will say that there was one remonstrator, but he had no idea what he was talking about, he didn't even know they had garbage cans in the alley. So, you know, that being said, I appreciate the council's support as we continue to improve the Broadway Quarter from a hundred and first to fifty-third.
Yes, sir. Anybody else having, you know, the comments?
And that, um, Mr. Grant provided some information showing that ninety percent of his, um, sale for customer service is here now, and this will just enhance it.
Yeah, I did see that, uh, in the report.
And I'm, I'm just curious, Jeff, the, the design, I guess I'm holding this up right from Broadway, you're going, the drive-through is gonna be going up toward the east, right? They're gonna pull in and go east in the lot, and then go out the, the alley?
Right.
Okay. I'm just trying to figure out the...
The reason why, uh, uh, Mr. Grant is willing to pave the alley, because it's really servicing his development.
Right, okay.
And then one more thing that, uh, he shared is that this is probably more so for safety for his employees, where he can close like at nine o'clock the inside of the place, and then people will be able to just go through the drive-through until ten o'clock. And I think that that's an excellent idea.
Okay.
Any more comments? Uh, do we need a roll call, or just a voice call? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you, council.
Thank you very much.
Next one is Lamar Sign Group, uh, owner is Innsbruck Country Park.
Nice try, Tom.
Oops, sorry.
And it's what that says, though.
Says landmark.
Landmark.
Oh, it started with L.
Sign Group, same thing.
Larry, I tell ya... I wish I had Lamar's money.
I was gonna say, he wishes he was in the Lamar family, probably.
Owner is, uh, Innsbruck Country Club LLC, Greg McCauley, variance of, uh, use approval Owner is Innsbruck Country Club LLC, Greg McCauley, variance of use approval for the proposed special acceptance for a use of a free standing sign to be constructed at the top, at the top allowing a digital message center to be included on the proposed special exception use of free standing sign. The location is 6701 Taff Street and zoning is a R1 single-family residential and the case number is Z5UV3-0215.
Good evening, Larry Yurko with Landmark Sign Group, thank you, Mr. President. Here this evening seeking your approval for the addition of a free standing sign for Innsbruck Country Club to enhance and identify the various operations within the club, the restaurant, the banquet facility as well as the, the country club. In addition to the, or the free standing side would, sign would incorporate a full-color LED unit with a operation stipulation that was mandated by the council last month or the, the BZA?
Or the zoning.
Yeah, the BZA last month. I'd be happy to answer any question that you have.
There are conditions placed on this petition for this petitioner only at this location only for this use only, advertisement for business within the Innsbruck Country Club property only and to allow messages to be displayed for nonprofit organizations and emergency services upon request, to limit the time of display on the electronic message center sign, Sunday through Thursday from 6:00 AM until 10:00 AM. That should be 10:00 PM, I'm sorry. And on Friday and Saturday from 6:00 AM until midnight.
Motion to approve, second.
Motion by Mr. Hardaway, seconded by Mr. Span for the approval of the case number Is that what the conditions that were written in the record?
Yes, with the conditions.
Motion stands in your second, Mr. Span stands.
Discussion, Mr. President?
Yes.
Larry, I hate to do this to you and Mr. McCauley, but I'm gonna, I'm gonna open up a can of worms through John. Advertisement for businesses within the Innsbruck Country Club, we've got a huge jumbotron that I get answers and questions all the time on the radio station. Was supposed to be for concerts, PSAs, emergencies, just like this. And lo and behold, a year, two years later, Rich, after we approved that thing, you and I were on the council, Boyd Asphalt's on there, McShane's is on there, Scaples on there, they're nowhere near that building. Guys, I'm gonna watch this sign like a hawk.
Understandable.
I tell you right now, you guys know I'm in the, in the business, Larry.
Understandable.
You know, if, if it's gonna be in there only, you know, John, I guess my question to you is, the problem we've got or could have is what if they wanna put up a dozen Titleists on that screen and say you can buy Titleist in the pro shop? I mean, that, is that, is that considered off-premise advertising? The product is sold at the country club. You know, I know what you guys are trying to do, but we've been down this road, Dorinda, with that sign on the radio station and I get questioned about it all the time, it's in my ward, I got a conflict of interest and I can't do a darn thing about it. And we approved it, Rich, we, we were told we were gonna have one thing out there and two years later, you know, they're out there putting all kinds of other guys on there that are nowhere near the Radisson, no PS, you know, everybody sees what's out there. Granted, we get a town panel, but again, we've gotta be more careful, I guess, John. I don't know if, you know, I don't know, Larry, if I'm...
I have...
Bring it to your attention.
That's understandable.
Has there not been a problem, Dorinda?
We have, we have no intentions of having any off-premise advertising on this board whatsoever.
I have one comment to make, they already have a, a sign over at the title company and they do know, do not do any other...
Now...
We have a digital sign there at the, at the title company and all he does is his services that are...
And for clarification, not to, you know, beat up on Larry too much, that sign that when we approved that, Rich, we didn't have the digital sign ordinance. In fact, Lamar came in and wrote the digital sign ordinance with former attorney Steve Bauer and Mr. Deering help, so we kinda took care of that, you know, that issue, I think, and just for the record, so, you know, we know, you know, we don't see anything in a year out there that, you know, may not be what we're approving here, that's all I'm saying, guys.
Understandable.
Council members, this is how I see the issue that Councilman Pettit has posed. A specific condition as I read it, Larry, is that you agree that advertisement on the sign will be for business, only for business activity that's conducted on the Innsbruck Country Club property.
That is correct.
And, and I think you've stated that reassurance just now on the record.
Yes, sir.
And that is an enforceable condition, but we have from the petitioner an assurance that they intend to comply with that.
And I guess the only thing I would, I would ask, guys, is that, you know, again, you know, couple of us here are golfers, I mean, we know what goes on there, you know, you're gonna put something on the pro shop that a set of Titleist irons are on sale in the pro shop for whatever it is, if it says, so long as it's directing them that that product is there at Innsbruck...
Absolutely.
I don't mind if you sell a dozen Titleist or a set of golf clubs.
We're not, we're not interested in selling golf clubs for Ringos.
Right, yeah, exactly.
Right, right.
You start sending them somewhere else or if it just says Titleist and it doesn't direct them into the pro shop, then I would have a concern, okay? That's my only...
Understand, understandable.
Yeah, I mean, I, obviously you're gonna do golf packages and the bar and grill and specials on dinners and lunches and that. I was just more concerned with the pro shop and, you know, what could be misconstrued is, is off-premise.
Maybe put an advertisement up there to bring the, the skeet range back.
Uh, just, just for the record, I mean, Larry, Larry is the petitioner, but Greg McCauley is the owner, so Greg, can you come up to the microphone and agree to the conditions that are being placed on it? That's all I ask for the record. You wanna read those into the record again and then have...
Sure. The following conditions are part of the variance of use approval. Number one, for this petitioner only, at this location only, for this use only. Number two, advertisement for business activity within the Innsbruck Country Club property only and to allow messages to be displayed for nonprofit organizations and emergency services upon their request. And condition number three, to limit the time of display on the electronic message center sign, Sunday through Thursday from 6:00 AM until 10:00 PM and on Friday and Saturday from 6:00 AM until 10:00 PM. Excuse me, until midnight.
Correct, Greg, for, for the record, could you just state your name for the, for the record?
Greg McCauley, Innsbruck Country Club, and we agree with all the terms set for the signage.
And this is located right at the entrance, correct? Cause I know, wasn't there a proposal to have this down south and our, our plan commission BZA attorney was...
That was a different sign, but...
Different sign, yeah.
Different. This would be located at the entrance.
Okay.
So, if they have a wedding here, they could put on their message center, congratulations, Jim and Mary.
Well, Jim and Mary not...
Yeah, Jim and Mary aren't getting married anymore, you didn't hear about that?
We'll put that up there too. What is cancelled?
Yeah, oh, yeah, yeah, anything, yeah, exactly.
That would be a business activity conducted at the country club.
Right, when the chamber has their outing out there, it's, you know, do that, yeah. Even your tournament events, if, you know...
I just wanna thank you guys very much for all that you do for the upkeep of your property. I like the sign, I think it's ethically beautiful.
Thank you.
I think it's gonna add a lot to your business and you guys are a pillar to the society of Maryville and I just wanna take the time to thank you for that.
Thank you. Guys can compete with that Santa Claus on the roof across the street from you.
You got plans for Santa?
You got plans for Santa, Larry? Wednesdays.
Wednesdays, okay.
Anybody else have any comments? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Any old business?
Yeah, Mr. President.
Sure.
Two weeks is picture day, ladies and gentlemen.
Yes.
So make sure you wear your, your best duds so that Stacy can build the composite for, I was gonna have it tonight, as I said, but she, we ran into a scheduling conflict with the photographer apparently, so the next meeting in, what is the meeting in April?
Whatever, the first...
Fourteenth. Fourteenth.
Yeah, we'll schedule everybody at six.
All right.
Okay, um, another piece of old business, the town newsletter is coming out, should be out sometime late next week, so it'll have the spring cleanup schedule on there plus various items from different departments. One of the things that we put in there that we're gonna try different this year is, you know, we have a lot of road projects coming up, a lot compared to what we do on main streets, so, excuse me, in there, we addressed those projects very shortly and informed everyone that we're gonna keep everybody updated on the website under...
Town Maryville.
Current news or, yeah, on the front page? Yes, latest news, thank you. And we'll do updates on these projects two, every two to three weeks so people can go to the website and find out currently what's, what's going on, what's going on in those streets.
Bruce, one other item under old business that we were talking about with the bike trail, do we have any dates yet for the second phase of CNO going into Forest Hills and out to Mississippi?
We probably won't start, be able to start clearing till October.
October, okay.
Yeah, so you really won't see anything actually being built till the spring of 2016.
Okay.
I got one thing, a couple of weeks ago I asked our attorney, Mr. Bishemi, to look into the ARC and we got the response from that and it's the inquiry about the ARC Northwest Indiana home at 336 West 56th Avenue, Maryville, Indiana. This is a home that has been operated as a community residential facility for individuals with intellectual and developmental disabilities for at least 20 years. This program is referred to as supported living. Currently four women, all over 55 years of age, live in the home with 24-hour staff coverage. Two of the residents are wheelchair-bound, two of the women attend day programs, services with the ARC. The other two women are retired. This is not now, nor has it ever been, a rehabilitation facility for addiction services. Please feel free to contact me should you have any further questions and this is Sue E. Christman, Director of Public Relations. Thank you, Mr. Bishemi.
You're welcome, Councilman. Anybody else under old business?
Uh, one other quick update, Mr. President, the senate bill that we all signed off on for the big boxes, I was told by State Representative Olthoff that passed in the senate 49 to 1 and it's now into the house. So they did receive our letter, Mr. Bishemi, I got a, a letter from Dr. Smith about that, that he was gonna be watching that as it goes to the house.
That's, that's good that he acknowledged it, cause he can bird dog it for us.
Yep.
Anybody else under old business? New business, any new business? Seeing none, at this time we'll open it up for public comment. Anybody have any public comment? Please come to the microphone, state your name for the record and limit your comments to three minutes, please.
No problem, my name is, good evening, my name is Clarence Phillips, live at 621 West 78th Avenue in Southmore Park subdivision. Had a quick question about ordinance 15-09. This is just regarding the resolution that was submitted by MCD. I assume after you have reviewed it, there were no necessary amendments or anything of that nature since you had first reading tonight?
That's correct.
Correct.
And second reading will occur at the meeting on April 14th and then the town's part of the business activity will be completed because this, this is our petition by the town government to the Maryville Conservancy District saying, we ask that you take these properties into the Conservancy District for the purpose of constructing and operating sanitary sewers and we're giving our consent and authorization. After that step's completed, then the actual completion of the design and the financing and the installation of the sanitary sewers will be handled by the Maryville Conservancy District because they're the government entity that would control it at that point.
Can you answer my second question, turns to second reading? Thank you so much, appreciate it.
Anybody else under public comment? Seeing no more public comment, announcements of order zoning appeals meeting is March 25th at 6:30 PM. Abandoned and blighted properties committee meeting is March 26, 2015 at 9:00 AM. Town hall will be closed on April 3, 2015 in observance of Good Friday. Stormwater management board meeting is April 7, 2015 at 4:30. Plan commission meeting is April 7 at 2015 at 6:30 PM and the plan commission meeting is April 10, 2015 at 8:00 AM.
Last one was the police commission.
Police commission, I said the plan, so I'm sorry.
Motion to adjourn?
Motion in a second. We're adjourned at 6:35 PM.